Call of order this time, the public hearing agenda. A consideration regarding tech amendments to zoning that will update repeal and replace certain factors of our current zoning ordinance existing in appendix A, B, and C. Regarding landscaping plans, development districts, public space, or just two. Timber harvesting subdivisions, or partial signs in definition of, definition of. I guess thank you to the jurors, the city manager?
I insist that you, God needs.
Yes, I have Stacy join with the city council, county planning, zoning, uh, department so that he can have clarity to the zoning changes that were sent over to the county. There was some confusion about some of the redlined areas. There was a total of nine changes that were asked for them. Um, staff there had made some recommendations with some reservations. Stacy had pointed out some things and asked them, um, be referred back, a couple of things were referred back to our legal, um, um, legal counsel. Um, Ms. Sweden subsequently made some corrections to a couple of them, some of them were based on concerns raised by a couple of council members. So I asked that, um, Mr. Ruth still come and point out distinctly what we had before and what these changes impacted. So, um, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce him having to come and address you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Any council members? So, this letter before you addresses many different topics as the city manager has said. Many of them are quick and easy. So, for example, request number eight in the, the letter that we got from the city community development department. Basically it's directly spreading there. So that's kind of easy as it comes.
Houston Jordan, come on, what code section does that refer to, the question of eight?
Absolutely. Let me get that conception for you. So, we're looking at, in the zoning code, which is appendix A of the city code ordinance, article seven, in section seven dash four F, as you brought.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me. Request number seven, which is article three, section three, point two, D and D, which is the portions and suites that we refer to. Mr. Mayor, this basically applying the setback requirements to portions and suites, which we thought was appropriate. Request number one, which would be section three dash seven two E, within Edward Landcase Performance, extra strength in the ordinance, file allowing flexibility, which we thought was appropriate. And now it starts to get a little hard. So, we're looking at, we're looking at requests four, five, and six. Four is the definition of subdivision within the zoning code.
Article two?
Yes. Five is the definition of subdivision within appendix D, which is the subdivision code. And request six is the definition of subdivision within appendix C, which is the storm warning code. The intent appears to be to allow for property owner or a developer to simply divide property without having to comply with all the stringent requirements of subdivision, such as detention facilities, curbing gutters, and such as that. So if I just wanted to split out some properties for whatever reason, I would be able to do that. As long as they were two, limited to two lots in two years, without having to go through this stringent requirement that anticipates new street and really would not be applicable to a simple lot division. And we thought that was great. What I don't really understand, and I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but I just don't understand why the definitions are intended and proposed to be slightly different. But I'm sure that's okay. Um, request number two is regarding the PD zoning district, which at this point in time is a legacy request. Which means that the city zoning code recognizes the properties in the city that are already zoning PD. And yet, an applicant can't request a rezoning today, moving forward for a brand-new PD. So it's recognized as a likely district, but that's all. Request number two, which is section five dash six, PD Plan Development District, does a great job of resurrecting it. But to what purpose? So, in the letter, what it says is that the city would like to have a mixed-use district that is for a mixture of residential uses and doesn't require there to be any non-residential uses. Which sounds perfectly reasonable to, to us. However, it would be much easier to amend the mixed-use zoning district exception, and I believe it's the exception H, as in Hanson, to just get rid of that return to your requirement that says that twenty-five percent has to be non-residential. Having said that, the PD zoning district has a higher box than the other zoning districts in that a content plan review here is required before the applicant even makes applications. And that's before the city council, and the express reason in the ordinance that the city council can hear it and make comments. And those comments can be implemented in the preliminary site plan before they even make applications, which sounds great. Except for the fact that I can't imagine that an applicant would choose to do that when they could simply request mixed-use, or downtown mixed-use, or downtown residential character. So I think it does a good job of putting PD together, but again, to what end? So, and then regarding request number three, which is regarding signage. This is section eleven dash thirteen A, which is an apple, which lists exemptions to the signage code. It provides for campaign signs.
Not anymore, Mr. Jordan.
Oh, that's excellent, excellent. Because that was the one that we had the most concern with. Okay, and so finally, the, the last one that I would like to address is request number nine regarding timber harvesting. And this is section three dash eighteen, G as in George, five. And in the letter, it states that this change is to have the city's code requirements comply with state code requirements. And I have to tell you that I haven't looked at the state code requirement, so I, I don't know exactly how, why this was required. But the change simply inserts the negative into these code requirements where the timber harvesting operation is not in conjunction with development. So for all of these various items that are required, this change says that they shall not be required for timber harvesting operations conducted not in conjunction with development. So, with the understanding that there was to be discussion and potential changes, we did recommend approval of these requests. A hearing was held before the zoning advisory board on May the twenty-third. So, so we opened up the public comment, just like the code requires. Um, there was some concern, and so the zoning advisory board did recommend denial of the request. Now, if you could answer your questions.
Mayor Thompson, my case is heard on a couple of things, because I don't think Mr. Jordan was privy to the changes that came to me after conversations on the staff level. Where, I'm not sure what request it is, but it's, uh, section three dash eighteen, the harvest, and timber harvesting.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with you, Mr. Jordan, that to put what's not required is a little confusing. And so it no longer reads that way, which is why it's in red in your book. Stuff that I changed from Frank's, um, draft is in red in your book, so you can see the difference between what he presented and to what my recommendation would be if you did choose to make this amendment to your code. And that's one of them. It just currently now says that timber harvesting shall be in accordance with the state law, and you cannot request, um, certain things per state law, which is like a permit fee, um, or a plan, when timber harvesting is done in accordance with, um, I'm sorry, when it's not done in accordance with, uh, development of a site. So, we did make that change, because we just made the order. The other change was that, and I know I stopped Mr. Jordan short, and I apologize, is that you cannot regulate just campaign signs, because now you're getting into content, and that's a first amendment prohibition. You can regulate time, place, and manner. So one of the things that this section, which is article eleven five, eleven dash thirteen does, is regulate time. And so any ground or state sign that's put up during the days of thirty days after, I'm sorry, during the qualifying period of any federal, state, county, or city election, will be allowed in certain places. So you regulate only time and place, as opposed to just campaign signs, which would go to content.
Is anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody who would like to speak opposed of this?
I do.
Go ahead.
I do have one issue.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Michael Locco, two hundred and eleven, double up road. There's come something approaching now, and the board of directors now is going to come up for a vote before this conference. And it just bothers me, if there were an outcry of public viewpoint, would the council people have time to absorb that before they bring it up for a vote? It would take me, it should be more time to consider these elements before they're voting on by the council. Otherwise, it's just being pushed down the community's throat.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak against or forward? Okay. We go to the next article on the public hearing, is public comments regarding placement of speed bump on Caldwell Drive. Director of Work, Public Works, John Fraggan. John Fraggan. That's okay.
You know me.
I know.
I had to speak up when I was elected.
This is the public hearing for the, uh, speed bumps as applied to, uh, uh, code board.
Is anybody that is, speak in favor of the speed bump, or pardon?
I do. I want to speak up for it.
Okay, and you do want to speak for the speed bump?
Yes, I do.
Okay, come on. Give us your name and address.
And I'm at the channel, about one twenty-eight Caldwell Drive, over here in Hanson, Georgia. I do have a issue with the teachers in my neighborhood. I live in the backside of the Caldwell, and I constantly go in that. I mean, we have children in this neighborhood, and they're mostly teenagers that don't take consideration of the kids. But do you want to play in the church, play basketball? Who knows, the child might be playing out in my yard, and a ball might go out in the road, and they're kind of flying around his house. I'm looking out for the children, for their safety. And I'm ready to pay for a kitchen, a lift, in my neighborhood, they agree with me. And I'm just concerned, I do have a motorcycle driver that lives behind me, and he wants to take, take my street. It's a race car. I mean, it's not only him, so, and I don't consider if you have kids in my neighborhood. I just want to look out for them. I know that it will take some little bit of time of the, um, most of the, we get all the kids where they need to go, if they need to get there. But I'm wanting children's faces, you know? It's like, I have been doing a great, great job coming in, I know, running around, but they can't be there all the time. I just want to see if we can get them to sleep last night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else would like to speak for or against? Okay. I'll close the public comments then at this time.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Um, I was sent an email that it started at six-thirty instead of six, and I think we might have missed our turn to talk about our speed bump on our road.
What road?
Uh, Hillside Drive.
No, ma'am, that comes up later on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, it's this time we close the public hearing. We'll start our road council meeting at eighteen-thirty. All right.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm happy to say that the council meeting had our input.
You got a break. You got me a lot. I'm going to. About thirteen. On here. The small one. Can't walk.
Now.
I'm proud of you. I'm very proud of you.
I just go.
We.
I'm the best.
I'm the best.
Hey!
We know what this is.
Yeah, come on, let me go.
Okay, so, I'm her daughter's. Yeah, his daughter can't read, my daughter's going to.
So, if this is something you want to do.
I bet you know where this is.
Oh, they can call.
Yeah, they all have it. Right, your daughter, my daughter. I think we're really shut out.
Yeah, I've been, don't you wish you could do.
I wake up, I wake up.
Yeah, that's me, I'm people. It's a little like.
She don't even know. She's, yeah. Small world. Steven's home. Do I have it wrong? Okay, I'll tell him I have it.
No, this is.
This you got.
Are you drunk?
How you doing? You always got a shot.
And I was too. Not sure. I was too. He likes to take kids, go to the.
You do not have.
I love you sometimes.
Good job. And I was a pro. But I, I mean, you, you gave my own.
He wasn't a pro. I didn't do it. He wasn't a pro. He was.
I will amend the.
An umbrella would be nice.
That's what the prize is.
I'll walk him into the ready.
I think I have walked a lot. So, it's always different, it was just a really. I do, I do.
Because.
Yeah.
I. I, I think it's. Yeah, that's what. Yeah, there's, there's a sticking on. We should let time, we should.
Yeah.
That's right. Look at me. Look at me.
You got pictures going?
Call, Hampton City Council's orders this time? Call Council's orders this time? Uh, please stand with the invitation, begin by Pastor Herhey from St. Hampton First Baptist Church, remain standing and place the flag.
Good evening, uh, this break. Father, we thank you for, uh, uh, you've given us the opportunity to live in such a wonderful city and, uh, the leadership that we have and, uh, tonight as, uh, they meet to discuss, uh, the business. Uh, we just ask that you will give them wisdom and direction, that they will just, uh, uh, do what is, uh, uh, right and, and proper to those that have elected them to serve in this office, uh, with honor. Uh, Father, and I thank you for this opportunity that, uh, this city has to, uh, to improve everything we do and just to make life better for our citizens. Father, we thank you for this opportunity and, uh, bless them and guide them as, uh, as everyone of us, uh, uh, are here tonight to, uh, with the expectation of what, uh, what is going to happen in the future. Uh, we love you and we thank you, this is next, amen.
I would say that the citizens of the United States of America and in the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's in now? Councilor Burton, come on, please.
Yes, I want to, uh, second amendment to the agenda to put on magazine military, uh, possible others on the military roll back.
I would like to amend that motion and, um, a council retreat to be added to it, um, so that we can discuss, then we will have one and for us to remove the approval of the West Main Street community meeting.
Remove the amendment. Second? You have to take it, you're taking on both of them. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor of the second one? Both things be added to the agenda. Presented approval of city council amendments, the regular session meeting till June the eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
I'm going to approve, uh, June eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Okay. Any discussion? Any changes? Yes, Mr. Burton?
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm there where it says I refuse myself for affiliation with the church. I refuse myself because of the sign, I want a financial gain to my family, it's not a plan, but it's not like that, or you changed it.
Yes, you make, make that one, the changes?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Pass the six zero. Public hearing held June the eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Need a motion to approve or disapprove?
Say the motion that we approved the public hearing, uh, held on June eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Any discussion? Any changes? All in favor? Pass the five zero. Knowledgeful of gas proclamation resolution, knowledge of outstanding achievement, my mayor calls him, Mr. Mitchell, will you join me down front? This is a opportunity for Mr. Mitchell, been in council, what, two years, mayor? Okay. This is presented by the Georgia of Uni- of the University of Georgia, Carl Benson Institute of Government and the Georgia Municipal Association, hereby certified business. Mitchell has successfully completed the requirement for certificate of recognition through the Carl Alphos Municipal Training Institute dated June twenty-one, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Mitchell, congratulations, this is an honor for you and for this city. Have any public comments tonight? Yes, ma'am, come forward, give your name and address and where you live.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Taylor Christian, one thirty-six Madison. I'm coming in because I like the, uh, formal things. Last year I had an issue with my water bill and I came to the, you see the customer service? I believe the young lady, he was, uh, happy, he was just kind of, I have to say that's probably the worst customer service.
Ma'am, just try to leave names out of the conversation, please.
Well, I, I was trying to, like, to go with you. That was probably the worst customer service. Uh, I would say I think it's better customer service than McDonald's or Subway. Other than her attitude, her, her posture and her behavior and her getting loud, she wasn't even able to help me resolve my issue. She didn't have any knowledge of how that water bill was working. But I'm not sure the customers people were hiring to help represent us here in the city that we're dealing with. I think they probably need some sort of formal training. They customers of the city, they'll learn how to communicate effectively, how to deal with resolutions of conflict, negotiation skills, they need some better training than her.
I would suggest that you, uh, give Ms. Billy Shaw the supervisor.
She did call me.
She did call you?
She did call me and I did make a suggestion to her. However, I'm not sure that was passed along well, but I'm going to give my complete.
Then I would, I'd suggest you call our city manager, Rebecca, I'm trying to meet with him also. Any more public comments? Ms. Oliver.
Ms. Oliver, from the college student, my comment is, uh, happy. I've had a good time before the two last, uh, meetings I've been in and how this and the life of people is changing and I just want to say kudos to Mr. Papa and his assistants. They really coordinate that very well and the good times are paid by all.
Well, thank you, Ms. Oliver. Any more public comments? Come on, turn.
I'd kind of like to know what the city council, city administration, what the purpose is regarding the increase in the county taxes. It would seem from everything that I've found in, uh, public is Hampton's increase is totally the same level. And I would think that reached one and it would also seem to me if property values were reassessed, the property values have gone up, the old middle rate would result in an increase in the county taxes anyway. Why is it necessary to raise middle rate? Uh, I'm wondering what the city's position is on that. Uh, on another issue, we've got a coordinate four seventy-eight coming up tonight and it's been to make this unoffice for any person who parks in the city owner operated park property overnight. Uh, that would, I guess, include here, city hall, police station, the parks and whatever. And I'm wondering if that's going to include clearing out all those county areas, that parking lot in city hall here, because it's illegal to them. And a strip reading of the text, it would seem to me that every day of the park over in the city yard at night is going to be in violation of color. And that doesn't seem pretty right. Uh, I don't know if I'm going to see anything tonight or not, but this presentation that, uh, is supposed to be by, uh, Lowes Land Development, not on King. If, uh, there's going to be an opportunity to make a comment from the public on that presentation, we all, I can do this, it could be an informal presentation, uh, I would like to have some opportunity to make a comment.
But that's what you're up there for now.
Okay. Uh, number one, the mixed usage from the visual presentation and what's allocated, there's no facilitation for parking commercial vehicles for delivery or service other than right in front of the building. And it would seem to me, it would be beneficial to have rear access parking areas for these commercial buildings and so with these vehicles, they're not going to be blocking the parking area. Likewise, the live work units, there is no parking for commercial vehicles other than right in front of the building. And, you know, their parking up there, there's just several slots, it's the same thing we have in our little downtown area. There's no pursuit seat for the, uh, commercial vehicles. They park right out in front, they pick up two, three, four, sometimes parking is taken and parking is considered as a debt. I would like to take my consideration.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any more public comments? Okay, this time I'll close the public comments and moving forward, under O Business Consideration Action. Ms. Oliver, we close public comments.
Yes, sir, but, uh, any on the public comments?
Oh, I am so far, thank you, Ms. Oliver. Presentation from Ms. Childress, Executive Director of Dream It Forward Foundation. I am so sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Come on. We all just get proud of that one, don't we?
So, I'm going to do it super fast, I'm going to name the children. Um, the Dream It Forward Foundation is an organization I founded in twenty twelve for, um, a mentoring organization for youth here in the Atlanta metro area. Um, I was invited by Ms. Oliver to let you all know that we are doing a summer feeding program. And so you might see my daughters out at the park, they give away free meals to youth eighteen years and younger. Um, and so it's Monday through Friday, kids can come in for breakfast from eleven to eleven thirty and lunch, um, two to two thirty. No registration required at the Greer Park. Um, and we do this program in four different counties, um, across the Atlanta metro area. So I no longer live in Henry County, Hampton, I now live in Clayton County, Hampton. So I'm not a resident, but we do still serve the community here. We've done mentoring at Hampton High, my daughter is a Hampton High graduate and so we just still serve this community since we're right down the street. And I just wanted to say hi to all the residents and let you know that we're here for the children and we have mentoring programs and after school programs, um, for single moms and children twenty-five years and younger. And so I like to share, just, I'll pass out a little flyers just so you all know that what we do and what we offer the young people, um, in the Atlanta metro area. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Childress. Now, moving on to O Business, Consideration Action on Speed Bump Humps on Hillside Drive in Hampton, Georgia. Public hearing was held on June the eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Public work John Dirac, Director, Don Frack.
Yes, this, this is brought up on the eleven, um, meeting and would like to know that, uh, council, mayor and councilperson, um, moving forward, we trust the statement on, uh, Hillside.
I heard that there was a young lady here earlier. Would you like to come forward for just a minute?
Sure. How are you?
I'm good, sir. Do you live on Hillside?
Yes, I do.
Give your name and address, please.
Um, Andrew Paxton, eight Hillside Drive.
Okay, and you're the one that sort of spearheaded this for your neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you've got all the, John, have they met all the requirements? John?
Yes.
They have met all the requirements? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any love from the council to approve or disapprove speed, um, for Hillside Drive?
Mr. Mayor, a motion to be approved, uh, by your.
I'll say that.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Turner. That's what I just said, and they met all the requirements that they have.
They had the petition, they.
Oh, the petition is in.
In your vote, that's.
That's all it is.
That's all it is. And Henry?
Uh, how many of the speed bumps?
We have a very short street, I think we have more than one, right?
We would like two, preferably.
If they want to pay, I think in the past the city has paid for one and if they would want to take them, that would be a third cost, I believe. But that's up to the council.
Henry's short, uh, it's a short street.
Can't hear. I was just asking where is Hill, I was thinking it was last of the rent, yeah, it's a fairly short street.
So do you want to make a motion, Henry?
Uh, yeah, I'll make the motion that, uh, we put one.
Speak up, everybody's got to speak up loud.
I'll make an amendment to the motion that we approve one speed bump for Hillside Drive. All second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
We can always look at it later down the road and see if that's a problem or not.
Okay, all in favor? Come, Ms. Brown, go ahead, turn.
Um, my question is, um, if we have an engineer, so part of our process wants to get signatures and the city has an engineer to look at it and propose where, how many speed bumps, um, are appropriate for that street. So do we have that information as part of that passion or is that something that's still open?
That's still open.
If, if, we have not had an engineer support done, but I think that we should because speed bumps, um, the location, height of bumps, all that is the factory.
Right, and that's going to start costs.
So before we install it, we get that done, make sure that it's installed properly.
So, so at this moment, I guess my question is barring that part being done, we're just approving whether or not they met the requirements for a speed bump or maybe a little bit of speed for that too.
Yeah, what, like, will be incumbent upon us to install it properly?
Right.
If we need to, you know, for it done.
Because what I don't want to happen is me doing assessment and then we come back and say, oh, by the way, now the, the citizens are going to be required to pay X amount towards speed bumps or the maintenance of these speed bumps. That's going to be something different than what we're talking about today.
Well, I think we're just talking about put one in at this time.
That was the motion.
Right.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Pass the six zero. Moving on under O Business, Consideration Action Regarding Changing Election Day Polling Places From Forson Library To Maria Church. Moving on under O Business, Consideration Action regarding changing Election Day polling places from Fortson Library to Maria Church. Where Calvary Baptist Church connects the Henry County polling location. Intended to change polling places, but published in the Henry Herald for two weeks.
Uh, the man consulting to postpone this, um, the motion postponed for the investigation into that research.
Do I have a second for that?
Research is, uh, is critical to the bombing. May I anything be postponed?
Okay, do I have a second to postpone?
Let, I'll do a second, okay.
Okay, second, okay. Mr. Mitchell, your wife's for polling?
One of the reason why, um, I have an easy card information, like I call to the, um, whoever. Whatever you want to know. It's not really clear to me and he hasn't signed up for a reasonable change. I don't know. He didn't tell me.
Ms. Brown?
I believe someone's put an election on today, so I think we should, uh, come up and show them that.
Well, right, I've got a motion, I have a second, we're discussing, and coming. Is there any more discussion from the council, I think you just, uh, were paying, do you second it, do you want? Do you want to hear from?
I do, I definitely can ask, I would like to hear from Ms. Mark Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, how it's set up now is on Election Day, uh, for this November election, voters will go to two different polling locations on Election Day. They will go to one location to vote their municipal ballot and then they'll go to their county, uh, polling location to vote their county ballot. By switching their current one location to Fortson Library to line up with the county. Going forward, any election, they would just go to their county polling location. Right now, every third election cycle, we are switching voters back and forth from the, uh, Fortson Library to their county location. And it is called a municipal election.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Oliver, can you tell me, um, we have early elections, we get a full week.
Yes, ma'am.
So where will early voting be?
That will take place at Fortson Library, that will not change.
So during the early voting, the county and the city information will be there during election?
It will. That's what I want to find out.
Okay.
One question I have to, um, you're proposing you, you, you request the, um, the council to do that now. Are you saying, uh, by using each error can go to, only go to A and go to B, say, um, say, link tree goes to A and F goes to B, that's what you're saying?
Whatever their county polling location is, that would be where they would go to vote their municipal ballot.
So if, I think to me, uh, in the, in the past election, we have seen that many, many residents vote a location and it was denied. And they could refuse and return that because they're not there and they don't have to vote again.
Exactly, and that comes from constantly having to move voters towards, um, voters, if you have voters that typically go to the early voting, then that's what they typically do, that is the trend. If they go on Election Day, they go back to the place they voted last. Um, if they look at their preaching card, right now, the City of Hampton voters, it lists their county polling location first, then it lists the Fortson Library under it. This will make both locations the same.
Go ahead.
Ms. Oliver, I need to know, why is it if during early voting, the question for the county is being asked during early voting at a county building? Because we were told last time that the reason they wanted to move it was because county questions shouldn't be housed in a county building and all of that one. So why is it that now it's going to be in the county building for a whole week of early voting, but on Election Day it's not? It can't, it can't be done.
It cannot, because this odd numbered year is according to the code, is a municipal election.
According to what code?
According to the code for us, it's twenty-one dash two, I think, sixty-five days. And what it specifically means by saying this is municipal election year, this is your year. The county by having the slot for it right now, that's a special. Um, and so you have to go to the Fortson play basically, and that is your municipal preaching.
Then I would like to withdraw my, um, uh, second.
Okay. I have a question for you, this makes sense. So, Election Day, I vote for Maria Church, to vote on the slot, I think I would have to go to the Fortson, uh, to the D Library, if I wait till Election Day.
If you wait until Election Day and your county polling location is Maria, you would go to Maria.
Welcome for the city election.
For the city location, big one how it is now, you would go to the Fortson Library.
And then go to, I would have to leave there and then go to the Fortson Library to vote on the slot, if I want to.
You would go to Maria, you would go to the slot. The Fortson, if you were municipal.
Oh, okay, okay, no, thank you, ma'am. You're withdrawing your second?
I am. I have a motion.
You have a motion.
What, there's another second to Mr. Mitchell's motion?
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
May I come forward and make my motion?
Go ahead, Anne.
I'm sorry.
Not matter, I think that, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we keep the Hampton location for voting, not to move it to the county. Keep our polling location.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I have a coordinate. So the motion right now is to keep, well, I guess we're disapproving what's on, um, on our agenda.
I believe the motion was to keep Maria Christian Church and Calvary Baptist Church as is, is that correct?
My motion is to keep Hampton polling location, let the county go to Maria and town. On Election Day, they might go to it.
Okay, that's what I would think, that's what I would think. So I would go to, you want to, uh, to the Hamptons where they vote for the general election? At the Maria and at Calvary?
At the Fortson Library, that's our polling place. That, that their county polling place is Fortson Library.
Wants to keep it like it is.
Keep it like it is.
Go ahead, you have a motion?
One of the things we discussed is when the citizens are, this is to help our citizens.
Right.
It, it's not about us or anything. And one of the things we discussed is unfortunately, when people are told to go somewhere else, they're also getting ugly with election workers, they're getting frustrated. And that, that to me is not the best thing for the purpose.
Any more discussion?
Uh, is there any way you can have one location, it doesn't matter county?
I am sorry.
Or the reason why, if, if I spend the day county, when I'm going to vote, I get a forty county, and if, anything you're proposing right now to do? Anything you're proposing right now, I think for the rest? And if they go out location, when they go there, they think, oh, no, that's the wrong decision. Anything you're for, you're proposing to, uh, to change?
In the past, what happened is by having the early voting and then the county, uh, polling location, they sometimes get the voter does, then they go back to the early voting location on Election Day. And they're going to separate, two separate locations. And there's going to be confusion because on Election Day, you're going to have voters that are going to show up, either the county or municipal voters. They're going to show up at the Fortson Library. So you're constantly going to be turning voters away from that one location, so they're going to see the municipal voter going to vote and wonder why they can't vote. And so the same thing is going to happen with your municipal voters, they're going to show up at their county polling locations to vote for their county ballot and then they're going to have to be directed to vote to see if we municipal polling location.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any more questions, uh, Ms. Brown?
This to me seems like an attempt to resolve this confusion between two voting places. And I've yet to understand or yet to hear the rationale by, for keeping it the way it is. If we're trying to do something that makes it simpler for people to go out and vote, then why are we keeping it confusing? Why not, are, why are we not leaning toward doing it a more simplistic way that we get more people more comfortable with the one way or the other? I don't understand the reason, and I guess it's why most of the, why we're feeling it.
Uh, the reason why, in my thought, when you start to facilitate areas and people to go to different locations, then you create a problem. If, until the consolidation, you say, um, A, go to that location, B, you go to that location, that's what it is. That's what you, so pretty what it is.
I just want to, I just want to say for me, uh, it's about the citizens of Hampton, um, knowing we go to Fortson Library to go vote. And that's where we go to vote for our city. If there is an issue or if the county has something going on that is a special election, of course, you may have to go to a different location as far as your county government. But for the city, the, the polling place has been Fortson Library. And that's what people know, they know the Fortson Library. They don't come to that place for municipal government. And, I mean, and I'm just speaking on behalf of the city, I know there is an element here with county at this time as well. But in regards for me, I'm looking at the citizens of Hampton.
Go ahead.
Most citizens are not going to be off work on Election Day, if to ask them to leave work, stand in line at Calvary, vote there, then go stand in line at Fortson Library, it's unfair to any citizen.
Amen.
So they're going to have to get home, feed comfort to their families all by seven o'clock, and that's not feasible for anybody, I wouldn't say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any more comments? Uh, go ahead.
One of the reasons I cannot support it, I want to just support myself, if all location at one place, that is, that's not anywhere.
I think that's all of the same, all of them, doesn't it?
But, um...
Okay, any more comments? Ma'am, would you read say your motion, please?
I make a motion that we keep the polling place for the City of Hampton as is, Fortson Library.
Any more discussions, do I have a second there? The attorney still second, okay. All in favor, Ms. Tarpley's motion? I'm going to vote with Ms. Tarpley to keep it as one lot.
Thank you.
New business presented, presentation by Ross and Maine, a welcome mixed-use community with its best in class, presented by Mr. David Russell, and Mr. City Manager.
I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. David Russell, Vice President. He's made a presentation on Rose and Main, which is a, going to be a mixed-use development at the end of Main Street and County. It matches our zoning, which is your mixed-use downtown developer. And it is a, it's a represent of a hundred and seventy, uh, projected to be a hundred and seventy residential units, live-worked, like community, represents a forty million dollar investment in our community. And from what I've seen, this is the type of developer and partner that maybe really we would want to have, someone that is committed to getting a lot of feedback from the community. I heard a public comment earlier about wanting to have the opportunity to have, um, community feedback and, um, the opportunity to, in time, on the type of, um, development that's going to be. We have already secured and reserved the depot from the seventeenth from four to eight P M for council members for the entire community to come. It is what is called an open charrette, where you will see the, um, more in-depth presentation than you will see tonight, where you will talk through, um, the, um, planners that have been working on this for a long time. This, the planning for this began long before I came here, um, it matches the zoning which you all drew a year ago, um, it is, uh, and it's something this community should be excited about. And, um, in these open charrettes, you get to, um, really get to connect with the community where you get feedback, what type of retail space do you want? What type of shopping experience do you want to have? There were some valid points that were brought up just, um, a minute ago, and that's the type of feedback that the planners need to hear, you know? Do we really want, do we want, um, loading and offloading of commercial supply trucks stopping right there on Main Street? I could tell you, then we just would go to the technical community, we would say, no, we would want them, we would want them pulling off and loading and offloading off the Main Street. We wouldn't want that because you're going to have traffic pulling off of twenty on the Main Street, we want that, we wouldn't want to have a, um, traffic jam right there off of twenty. So that's the purpose for having these type of charrette. And I can tell you, from my experience, you don't often get a developer that is so committed to getting this kind of community buy-in, that wants to operate in such an open and transparent fashion. And, um, it's a pleasure to be able to, uh, introduce David Russell and his company and find any further deal and turn it over to him so he can come and give you a, uh, a visual introduction to the conceptual plans to what, what should be a bright and exciting forty million dollar investment with homes that are going to start at two hundred and fifty thousand, um, meet all architectural standards and be in the two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar price range, which should be something exciting because it'll raise everybody's property value when it's around the median. So without any further ado, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Uh, I was going to put this part at the end, but I'll put it at the beginning since you brought it up. We are holding an open community workshop next Wednesday evening, seventeenth, four to eight P M with the depot. To address the gentleman's comment, we haven't gotten to that level of detail in our design yet, and that's exactly the sort of info we're looking for. I'm going to leave a stack of these flyers, I guess, up on the, the, uh, the barrier here, and if you'd like to take one, please do, we'd love to have you there. We will have, uh, food, uh, catered by Rudy Davis here in downtown Hampton. So if you're hungry, you don't have to go home and eat dinner because we will feed you, and I hope to see you, ma'am, when you're there. So, yeah, um, my name is David Russell, Vice President of Development and Vice Partner. Most of you probably don't know our company, we have recently, um, become very active in the county, we own several commercial and residential properties, mostly in the southern part of the county. We have two sites in the City of Hampton, uh, one, one, uh, residential community in the City of McDonough where we own and manage forty-four rental homes in the Iris Lake Village subdivision and a couple of other properties in unincorporated Henry County. Um, could you, uh, answer the next slide, please? So our site in, uh, in Hampton we're talking about tonight, which we're calling Rose and Main, is at the corner of Rosen Ball Drive and Main Street. And I'll, uh, I'll get back to the significance of Rosen Ball Drive again in a minute. But, uh, it's the gateway site to downtown Hampton. We are right on Georgia twenty, we have about a thousand feet of frontage along Highway twenty, the entire corner of Main Street, the entire block between Highway twenty, Main, Rosen Ball, West King Road. So just to get you situated, we purchased the site a couple of years ago. We purchased the site a couple of years ago, kind of part of a long-term strategy to, uh, hold land in Hampton. We saw demand and growth coming this way, weren't quite sure what we were doing with it. And then, as we were going through the process, uh, we met with, uh, your former Community Development Director, Mrs. Kay, and she was talking us through the LCI study and zoning ordinance. And we got really excited about this idea of doing a mixed-use town center type community here. Next slide, please. So, we then got into sort of researching the background, how we got here, you know? Saw that the, uh, political centers initiative study, the LCI study, back in twenty eleven, that this site, along with the one on the other side of, uh, East Main Street, were designated for higher intensity mixed-use development. The graphic you see on the right side of the screen is actually the rough site plan that, uh, TSW came up with for our site eight years ago. As you'll see, the plan that we're presenting now isn't a whole lot different from that. Uh, commercial uses, high-density housing along Main Street, a linear park in the middle along the street, and, uh, residential communities along park spaces on the eastern side of the property. That's the plan they came up with, that's the plan the city endorsed. If you, that's the next slide, you can see in zoning ordinance, what this site is now zoned for is downtown mixed-use. I won't read all of that, but this is layout of the new ordinance. Basically saying a vibrant downtown, implementing the vision of political centers initiative, blocking vice versa, playing small businesses, et cetera, allowing a wide range of different residential and commercial types. All of that is exactly what, what I personally was hoping for, uh, and what we as a company are looking to do. We want to build communities that stand the test of time. Next slide, please. So what is this vision that we're, that we're presenting here? Uh, we want to be a, a mixed-use community that is the gateway site for Hampton, that provides a variety of housing types, including detached single-family cottage-style units. Uh, we do have one part of the plan where smaller units, probably around a thousand, twelve hundred square feet, that are kind of U-shaped around the shared front yard, and more than a cottage core arrangement. That's something that both the plan and the zoning allows. A central park for the community with streets and, and, uh, walking trails. Community clubhouse with a swimming pool and community garden, pocket parks and open spaces. And I think this, this is kind of the, the key to all this. We've heard a lot of skepticism of that, oh, this is just another low-quality residential development, you're just gonna build and, and move on down the road and do your next project. I, I have a background as an urban planner, an urban designer, and I wanted my whole career to work on a project like this. And, you know, my personal vision, the vision that the company shares, is we want to build a community that lasts a hundred years or more. Our inspiration for the community is rooted, and I'll explain why, in, uh, the Sears Robuff catalog. If we, uh, advance to the next slide. There's a house here in Hampton, on the upper right, twenty-one West Main Street, that we actually recently found out is in fact a Sears Robuff kit house, for those who don't know. You would order a house, rooted catalog, they ship it to you in parts, and you build it on your site. And you can see a hundred years later how beautiful that home looks now. I'm not sure if you've ever seen it tonight, but men who ever owned that property were keeping it up so nicely. It speaks to the needs of quality communities and the desire for people to have something better than what's been built, not just in Hampton, but all over Metro Atlanta, particularly on the south side. We're seeing a lot of, uh, you know, national builders come in and buy up hundreds of lots and builds, what I would call the lowest common denominator, housing, you know, priced as cheaply as possible, built as quickly as possible. And these communities don't age well, they don't make people feel good about where they live, and they don't build communities, and I agree with that. Another inspiration for the, the Sears Robuff connection is the Rosenwall Drive itself. I don't know how many people know this, but, uh, that street is named after the Rosenwall School. It used to be there, and it's named that because Julius Rosenwall, who was the CEO of Sears Robuff Company in the early nineteen hundreds, personally donated millions of dollars of his own fortune to build schools for African-American children all over the southern United States. And there was one here in Hampton that was torn down in the nineteen seventies. Um, and there's really no historical record visible in Hampton of this. If you can advance to the next slide. Uh, we actually would like a community building on the property to be built in the style of the Rosenwall School. You can see on the top right there is the original architectural plans of one of the schools and what it looked like on the outside, it was like, uh, the community building and monuments of the school that no longer stands here in Hampton to commemorate that history. Uh, that's sort of the, the bigger story. What we really want to do in terms of everyday life is make this a place where the people who live, not just in this community, but in Hampton, have a place to go that extends Main Street. We have gathering spaces, modern commercial spaces, the restaurant shops, local businesses. Every home in this community will be within one block of a park or an open space. And we would love to have many, but not all, the community amenity be open to everybody, not just people who live in this community or can afford to live in this community. So, you know, things like the, the pool and the community, and, I'm sorry, the clubhouse, we'll be more into the residence, but the community garden, we'd like to have a public park, possibly a dog park, the river trails, uh, sorry, the walking trails along the creek, we'd like that to be available to the entirety of the community as possible. Next slide, please. So here is the plan that we are now presenting, and we will have this in greater detail available at, uh, the, the public workshop next Wednesday evening. As you see, it greatly resembles what TSW designed going back eight years to the LCI study. And, uh, you know, we really think this represents something that is supportable by the market, consistent with the city's vision, and something that, uh, really will make Hampton an even better place to, uh, to live and, and work in. I'd like to show one more slide, which is who we partner is, a little bit about us. We're based in Atlanta, every property we own is within Metro Atlanta because we manage all of our own properties. We're an investment, development, and management company. We do not farm out management to third parties, we do all of it in-house. Uh, I've got the smiling faces of our senior leadership, so you can see who we all are. Also want to introduce my colleague, Stephen Holmes, who will be our Development Manager for this project. I told Stephen he will be a household name in Hampton by the time we're done with this. And, uh, you know, we're gonna be here a lot, we're going to be deeply invested in this community, not just financially, but personally. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, Mr. City Manager, for having the opportunity to speak tonight. And one more time, please tell everyone you know to come next Wednesday from four to eight P M to hear more, talk to us, and give us feedback on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Again, that's next Wednesday, four to eight, at the train depot.
At the depot, correct.
Thank you. And the pepper is provided.
It is.
The weather may be weird.
Don't eat too much.
Right. Presentation, slide five, update, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, I need to treat you with a, uh, kind of a two-stage update. Number one, um, we want to discuss on a project list we had, uh, put the first slide up. We put up a couple of categories, we, uh, and we had a special community meeting in which we asked for some feedback, we had some discussion. Some of them were spirited, we asked, um, we got feedback from that. We also polled council members, and we, um, asked staff and did some evaluation. Here are the categories which we have determined are most important, that we, um, addressed in our SLOSS five project request list. We, um, the determination as to how much money, of course, we would allocate to each category is, uh, determined by the, and we haven't done that yet because we've come down with a sixty-four thousand dollar question, whether we, whether we end up with an intergovernmental agreement with the city, with the county, whether we end up with seventy-five, twenty-five split on the money, or a seventy, thirty percent split. But these are the categories, and I want to put them up, um, in, in what we believe is in order of importance. Public safety, of course, we have needs for fleet cars and, um, vests and equipment for, uh, our police department. We, parks, development, we have seen, uh, several council members. We also, uh, had the public point out some improvements that we need, we need some upgrades specifically to, um, the skateboard park and the trailer park. There's, we have, we have had some wear and tear on the park, park equipment needs upgrading, and there's, there's, um, there's some decay there, and we need to have some improvement. But also, we need some park development. We have, um, we have some opportunities there to develop some pocket parks. The next category, green space and trail development, I think we need to probably acquire some green space and extend some of our trails. Also would like to say, as we, um, in, we, in, uh, a couple of years ago, had, um, have had some conceptual plans, um, done that, um, for some trails. I think we need to develop that out and pay for the conceptual plan. I think it's kind of us to move forward with that. So I, um, I earmarked that, put that front forward. Our overwhelming need, um, is road sidewalks. Mr. Sprigens and, uh, Mr. Whitley have accurately pointed out, we've got forty-one miles worth of roads, linear miles worth of roads. Our costs, our ongoing, um, cost to, we take those roads, it's one hundred and fifty, three hundred and twenty, two, two fifty, just three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per linear mile. You do the math on that, it's gonna cost us anywhere between nine and a half million to eleven million if they were all to be done at one time. Thank God they don't all, or even be done at one time. But we have to have a rotating schedule, which we do that, plus there's obvious need for sidewalks. The next category are water and sewer enhancements. The, um, it is clear we have a growing, uh, there are more and more developers that are coming to us from residential and commercial development. There's interest to come to Hampton. It is obvious that with the moratorium on, um, on building of, certain building in Henry County, there's more and more interest in coming to Hampton, we're getting, and frankly, there's, uh, the Henry County Water Department lacks, uh, sewer development in certain areas. So we're getting a lot of interest in, in coming to Hampton and developing some land. So for us to be able to spur economic growth in the area, I think we need to be able to extend our water and sewer, and we need to be able to address our, uh, water and sewer indebtedness. And we're looking at ways to do that, and that's why that is ongoing. Our capital improvements to our municipal buildings, we have, um, longstanding needs, to, um, build some, um, longstanding mangos for us. So those are the, um, six most important categories. I, uh, will use this as a segue point. We made this, uh, when we had the special call meeting with the commissioners, I made this presentation to them. You all were there, it was a joint meeting of the, uh, council and the mayors and the board commissioners. For some reason, the, uh, board commissioners said today that they still haven't received a project list from the, uh, from the city of Hampton and city of Stockbridge. And in fact, uh, we did give this to them, and it, uh, this list was every bit as detailed as the District Two project list that was produced by the county. So, um, now I will segue to what happened today at the nine o'clock business meeting. So this is the latest, um, the latest information that I have that I need to update those council members that were not there, and the citizens of Hampton that may not be aware.
And thankfully, this is not for anybody in Henry County.
Thankfully, thankfully, our, thankfully, that was out all the time.
I just want to make clear, thankfully.
Go ahead. So, um, uh, first and foremost, I want to take everybody to the faculty so we get the numbers right. Um, this was what was offered originally by Henry County. And this is what we call the seventy-five, twenty-five split, and this is what their projections were. On the SLOSS, they're offering, this is based on a six-year collection, and you can see in the bottom right corner, the projections by the Henry County Finance Department would be that we would collect two hundred and forty-five million dollars. Henry County's seventy-five percent take on that would be a hundred and eighty-three million. Now that is just based on historical practice, not the law. That's historical practice by signing intergovernmental agreements, not the law, okay? The legislature has written in that the fairest way, the way it is split, is by population. You all heard District Two Commissioner, that came and attended a previous meeting, said that what, that by law it should be split by, by population, unless it's modified by an intergovernmental agreement. Historically, by practice, like has taken place in Henry County for time immemorial, we have accepted, all the cities, the four cities have accepted by practice, a seventy-five, twenty-five split, because usually the county projects, normally they would put a lot of county projects that benefited a lot of the cities, and they agreed to take the seventy-five, twenty-five split. Also, back then, more people lived in unincorporated Henry County. Times have been a change, and more and more the cities have grown and the population has shifted. The state law says the population figures that will be accepted is in the last dicentennial census date. Okay? That's important for you to keep track, all right? So Henry County offered a seventy-five, twenty-five split, when they sent us the, the email on May thirty-first, they clearly said it, said based on the twenty-ten census date. But yet, they wanted us to accept this split. And you can see the seventy-five, what they would get, they said the twenty-five percent split. The column that you see, um, shaded there, shows what our population of Hampton was. Um, that's clearly what our population was in twenty-ten, but those figures are wrong. The percentages are wrong. They want us to be, what you see under the seventy-five percent column, that's actually a reduced figure. They squeezed and reduced our percentage and forced it to fit within twenty-five percent. The eleven point six two percent was accurate, uh, as it pertained to the overall hundred percent of Henry County's population. But if we were to accept twenty-five percent split, that's what we would accept. That's what we would get under seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, percent split, seven point one one nine million dollars. The total going to the cities would be six, sixty-one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. We go to the next split, the next slide. This is what the cities countered with. All four mayors, with the support, unanimous support of their councils, rejected Henry County's offer, offer, and countered with a seventy, thirty split because the twenty-ten census showed that the, um, cities comprised twenty-nine point five eight percent of the county's total population. And the twenty-fifteen estimated population showed that the four cities comprised thirty point zero three percent of Henry County's total population. And the twenty-eighteen estimated population showed that the city's combined population comprised thirty point six percent of Henry County's population. And as the ci, as the county continues to grow, and more and more people are coming into the respective cities, by the time this SLOSS will end in twenty-twenty-six, the cities may well make up if high as thirty-four or thirty-five percent of the county's population. So the cities countered with this- So the cities countered with this offer out of fairness, given the fact that you wanted us to accept a twenty-five percent split based on population. You said that, take your twenty-five percent split, but subdivide your twenty-five percent split based on your percentage of population, right? Go back to the first, the earlier slide, right? You see how they subdivided the twenty-five percent column? They wanted McDonough to take nine point one eight percent based on their population, Stockbridge based on their population, Hampton by their population, and Lucas Grove based on their population. Now they, now they argue that they don't want us to use overall population. So we countered, of course, we go back to the seventy-thirty slide. We countered with that. They were unhappy with that. But I want you to focus at the break in number. If we were, if we were to get, this is what we believe we deserve, and this is what the cities believe they deserve. Instead of sixty-one million, we believe we deserve seventy-three million to be split accordingly. Hampton would then get eighty-five million as opposed to seven point one. We believe we deserve more than two point nine one percent. We believe we deserve three point four nine percent of thirty percent. Eleven point six two percent of the overall hundred percent of the entire county's population. So how did the county respond? After the joint meeting, they alluded to it at the joint meeting, and today they issued an ultimatum. They passed a resolution, um, they, um, they made a motion, then they passed and they issued a, an ultimatum to all the cities. If you would, go ahead and put the next slide up. This is what I'm term, terming the nuclear option. They have given the cities a deadline by the nineteenth to submit our project list to them and to sign an intergovernmental agreement, accepting the original offer of seventy-five twenty-five, period. Or else, they will do the following. They will go on their own, call for a SLOSH election without an intergovernmental agreement with the cities. That will cause them, they will not be able to collect for six years. They will only be able to collect for five years. Okay? What will then happen if they don't have an intergovernmental agreement with any city? Okay? Now it takes, this is, I gotta add this caveat. It takes, um, two cities, as long as two cities making, uh, two cities comprising fifty percent or more of the, of the county's total population. If two cities comprising two percent or more, I mean fifty percent or more of the, of the, um, population of the four cities, if two refuse to sign, there's no intergovernmental agreement. Okay? Then, then, then they, they will go on, they can go on on their own with the nuclear option. This is what will happen. They cannot collect for six years, they'll collect for five. Instead of being able to collect two hundred and forty-five million, they'll collect two oh four. Everyone will suffer. What they will then do is they will be, they won't be able, they'll be off by forty million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. They'll take the first twenty percent off the top. This is what they're threatening us with. They'll take the first twenty percent off the top, which means no city will get anything. You've lost year six. You're down to collecting five years. They're going to take year one, which means there's now only four years left to collect. Oh, but then a miraculous thing happens. Then the rest of the money gets split according to population, which is exactly what we've been arguing for in the first place because that's what the state law sets. And then it gets split by population percentages, which puts us, now, the numbers you see right there, the numbers you see right there is what would happen in the nuclear option. So you need to be aware of that. We would drop from the original offer of seven point one, we would drop to five point five. The county would lose a tremendous amount. They would have to cut their projects in every single district. Their, their drop would be quite a bit. They would only be able to collect a hundred and fifty-six million where they would have been up at a hundred and seventy-one. And, um, it seems quite unreasonable to me. We met, the city managers met with the county manager. If you look at the original plan, what we proposed, it was only a difference between twelve point two five million between our, what, uh, their plan called for them to get twelve million dollars more. Our plan called for them to get twelve million dollars less. The city managers met with the county manager yesterday. We offered a plan that closed the gap by seven million. And how we did that was, the cities that had projects, where the county had projects within certain cities and where their cities were able, where those cities were able to collaborate on those projects, they were willing to collaborate and put some money towards those projects. And the cities that were able offered up over seven million dollars worth of collaboration. And Henry County government refused to give one inch. Offered up not one dime to meet the cities halfway. And they had seventy percent. And they came today with the nuclear option. That's what happened today.
We had, we did, and I would think Ms. Oliver, she was there when we met with the county commissioners, that, and Stacy again, this is, is, uh, Merkel, is, we have to, I took a stand with the other four mayors that we wanted our thirty percent. I will not sign an agreement with the county unless these six people up here tell me to do it. I'm sticking to a seventy-thirty. In two thousand and ten, we were at twenty-nine percent. The new census is coming out in twenty-twenty, will take effect in twenty-twenty-two. The cities could be at thirty-five. So since five to six years down the road, here we are again, probably just saying about, well, you're taking a stand with the mayors. I know, I've talked to two other mayors today that are sticking with us, haven't got a hold down the mayor yet. So I know I've got three cities that are sticking with the city of Hampton, two cities are sticking with the city of Hampton. I haven't talked to one of them. It's time that, this is kind of going in myself, which stands up against the county.
Well, I just think that there's more reasonable ways to do business.
I mean, we make it offers to the county.
Yeah, um, and we, we can discuss it, um, later, but I, I wanted to give you the accurate, uh, an accurate uptake and our citizens need to hear the truth because, um, there was no opportunity. Ms. Hartley and Mr. Byrd and I were there today and, um, there was no opportunity to rebut. So, um, those are the facts, that's what's going to happen. Uh, but we'll have an opportunity to respond, um, we will, we'll talk about it later. Uh, but, um, any thoughts, um, um, open any questions or feedback about the project with us?
In, in District Two, for District Two, there was no, nothing in the city of Hampton with, or the project?
No, there, there were not. And we asked for, um, we asked for specificity even about the fire station, on the relocation. They refused to say, uh, the, first of all, everyone needs to know, the fire station needs to be rebuilt. There is legitimacy to that. Um, the, the land, uh, you, you got sinking floor, it, it needs, it needs to be rebuilt, okay? I asked Chief Austin to go pull some E-nine-one-one numbers and I can tell you that, um, there's things called EMS demand zones, fire demand zones. I happen to know a lot about it. I spent thirty-five years in the fire service, so I, I, I know. And one of the things that was pretty revealing by the numbers he pulled, uh, one thing to look at is how much your, um, response times go up every time that fire station is out on a call because the stations are so, um, far apart here in Henry County. So whenever, uh, Station Five's already tied up on an emergency and they have to pull in another engine or med unit to come in and respond into the city limits, our response times go up precipitously, okay? So the worst thing that we could see happen would be for that station to be moved out onto the outskirts, especially if it were to be moved west of forty-one nineteenth. Um, and one of the things that they, they kept saying was they wouldn't commit to us where it would be relocated. So, you know, I, I trust they know what they're doing, but they wouldn't, for some reason, they would not tell us. And you would think that if they already had a plan, that this sort of plan, before we put a project list together, you should have already done your, your analysis on where you want to, I mean, I've run three SLOSH programs. I never, never put a fire station on a SLOSH program if I hadn't already done my analysis of where I want to locate it. So I was puzzled by that. Not one single road project was earmarked for the city of Hampton. Um, Mayor Hutchison and I met specifically with the commissioner and gave three roads that we thought were important. They did not, you know, we, we named East, we named East Main Street, Locust Hampton Road, um, and it's Woolsey Road. Woolsey Road, okay? Um, it, it didn't appear on their list, okay? That didn't happen. So we didn't have a single project that we could collaborate with, and frankly, there isn't anything here. We also asked the direct center be located here. And I would just say this, for a county of this size, not to have a real recreation, I'm talking about a real, I'm talking about twenty-five to thirty thousand square feet, indoor basketball, weightlifting, indoor walking track pool. It's mind-blowing. I come from Platon County, we got them located all over town. I'm just stupefied that we don't have them, okay? And they're not even planning to build a real, okay? So that's my little, you call me an old rec center, but I, I, I need to ask this. If, if there's not any, if, if there's any objection to the categories of me putting this on the project list, that it could be me putting forward this project list, if there's any objection to me putting forward this project list in the category form, please let me know. If there's not, I would like your approval to go forward with the six categories that I've enumerated on tonight's presentation. What's coming?
Uh, so, project list. I would like to add a pro, uh, uh, item to the project list. Economic development, um, I think that that is going to be imperative and we need to make sure that we have some resources set aside for some economic development that the city is going to have to invest in, in their own city. So I would like to add that on the list. I don't know how to let that down for deals about.
I, I think that's a little broader to qualify.
You're on toward Ms. Whitley.
Well, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I looked at the project, I mean, I looked at what we submitted last time and they had it broken down like that, community development, um.
You can do broad categories, um, and, and not necessarily go into detail about exactly what it's going to be used for. I mean, we've got broad categories here, um, and so it wouldn't be against the Title Forty-eight, which is where SLOSH laws exist to put economic development. I will say though, during the update, the annual update, you need to be specific about what that project includes, um, so that the citizens and anyone else would be aware of how that money is set.
I have one that I did, um, can you put back up District Two's list for me? I want the council to, and the citizens to know. Uh, speaking with Commissioner Dee Clinton, District Two, uh, with the Recreation Center, as everybody has living and has been living in Hampton, realized that we will promise a true Recreation Center. So they had a gymnasium and all of that. That started in SLOSH thirty, I believe. And we end up with a two-room connection to our senior service building. Uh, the Recreation Center that Commissioner Mi, uh, has on this, yeah, list, um, she's trying to get two Recreation Centers. And as Mr. Colby has explained, six thousand, six million dollars won't take there one. Um, we're hoping that our, in our talks from here to the eighteenth, is it? Nineteenth. Uh, we are able to nail down and get a real, true Recreation Center. It has been some discussion about instead of getting the full-fledged Recreation Center here in Hampton, have a Boys and Girls Club built here in Hampton. Um, that is a discussion, if that is a partnership that we, you know, want to see. That might be an area that we can work with the commissioner on if that money is allocated to cities. You know, that she's saying this is where she's, she's looking to build it at in, in the city. That might be where we can work. But I want to say this, and, and this is what I said when it was brought to me. Uh, we have, we took some tours around the, the city, um, and county in regards to a Boys and Girls Club. As I explained to Commissioner Clinton that the Boys and Girls Club is restricted only to children. That is members of the Boys and Girls Club. So it still won't be a true recreation facility for the community. It is, from what I've heard in the community in the past, we want a true community recreation building. So I will definitely be open and listening to the citizens to say whether or not we want to go in the direction of a Boys and Girls Club versus, uh, Recreation, um, facility and the council. But I wanted to make sure that I give you that piece of information because that's what I was telling.
Ms. Bodie?
Um, I feel that, one of the things I've heard the most from the citizens is we need more for the older teens, children, adults. So I'm in favor of more of a rec center than just kids, just get the opportunity, we need more in our churches, um, schools. We have a lot of those type of opportunities. But something, I just want to make sure our citizens know that weren't there, when we went to that joint meeting, and you'll know the dates better than I know it, but the county kept saying, it's always been done this way. That's why they want the seventy-five twenty-five split. And they said we didn't give them any time. But one thing to me that was frustrating because it wasn't fair was, we didn't, you, I mean, we, you did not get this letter until May twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth.
No, no, May, May thirty-first, Friday at six fifteen, well, six fourteen P.M. or Friday after work.
At what date did you reply after all, because all the cities then had to meet. We had to have a regular council meeting and you replied with about three minutes.
Well, no, the email asked us to, wanted us to be prepared to come have a disagreement and, and sign IGA and have a pictures taken by June nineteenth. And that was, that was, that was the first time we got to see their project list. And I just want to go back to, you know, part of the way it has always been done was, um, there were different people and I believe there was better communication. And I believe the county probably settled the project list a lot sooner. Um, I, as I said earlier, I worked on three SLOSH programs in Platon County. I have never, and I, I've worked from the countryside. We never hit the ball like this, okay? And I, I had worked with Forest Park, Moro, Lake City, Riverdale, Jonesboro, and a lot of them, okay? As more cities than in Henry County, and we never hit the ball like this.
Ms. Whipple?
Ms. Littler?
Um, one more thing, I was like, and I don't remember the exact numbers on this either, but when we went to that meeting, the consensus, consensus, consensus from two thousand and ten is almost the exact same number as what our registered voters in Hampton are right now. So they're saying there's, there's no proof for growth, but we do know what our registered voters are right now. And that's not even counting our kids, so we're way above the two thousand and ten numbers that they're working with.
Now, and you're, you're right to bring that up because we have, uh, A R C did an estimate in twenty fifteen, or A R C's already did in twenty eighteen, and it's steadily growing. There will be other census in twenty twenty, and it'll be certified in twenty twenty-two. And that's what the other city managers report now. You know, the number's gonna be way up before this, before we're a third of the way through the new census. You know, we may well be kicking ourselves for accepting, I mean, look at this one, this one. The city's accepted far less for the last nine years. You accepted it on twenty ten, you accepted it on twenty-fourteen SLOSH, and now you're being asked to accept it on the twenty-twenty SLOSH going forward into the future. So you're gonna basically accept numbers that were bogus in twenty ten, and you're gonna accept sixteen-year-old numbers that were, I mean, you know, six, to twenty twenty-six, it's crazy.
Ms. Mitchell, um, Mr. Colley, I'm very thankful for your, um, great work. Good question for you, um, I'm not if I dig District Two, uh, part of this, that you rec center. In my research, a rec center cost about six million dollars, a true rec center.
That's, that's not counting, that's a, what I call sticks and grills. That's not counting land acquisition, that's not architectural fee, that's not environmental, okay? So, and that's also another thing that always used to drive me nuts, when you talk about parking lot lights, you might as well, you, you get ready for another hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars parking lot lights, striking, and if you're not, if, if you're a city, uh, you know, I mean, you, you, then you end up either leasing it from Georgia Power and pay upfront, uh, and if you're not, if you're not a county and you can't get your parking lot paid, um, you know, you gotta figure that into the, into the county, we would pay for ourselves and we'd save money on a paving of a parking lot, but if the city doesn't want to be able to do that, they gotta, they gotta pay the contractor to do it. So, yes, you take the square foot, plug in three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, that's the gov- uh, that also, um, that includes your F F and E, so your fixtures, your appliances, your things like that. And so you're gonna have, you're gonna have that, your computers, your, your carpet, um, you know, your, now, now, on a rec center, your F F and E, your, that could go really crazy. I mean, you start putting in an eight thousand dollar treadmill, so you, 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 you put in, you put in about twenty, you put in about twenty true treadmills, you start getting, you start getting away, okay? Electrical machines, I mean, that, that, I'm talking about on a normal, on a normal building at three fifty, including your, that includes your F F and E, your furnitures, your fixtures, your appliances. Uh, and I mean, your, your rec center could get crazy, you put in a big pool, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a million dollars, so. I mean, those are, those are numbers I know, I mean, I know. I just priced out a hundred million dollars of destruction in the last two years, so.
So if, um, at the six million dollars for two rec centers and didn't certify Hampton involved in it, you know, beside that, six million dollars need hit one, because of whatever, for public safety. Then we can have a bridge across, uh, making sure we want to, uh, what is it, for public safety?
I, I think you're gonna have to get, I think that's a long-term project that we would need to get. First of all, we're gonna have to get approval from the state of Georgia, you know? That's gonna take a long-term permit, and you're gonna have to get some wide one. But I think it's worthwhile for long-term economic development. I think that we need to talk about partnerships, and I think, I think it's worthwhile. Uh, matter of fact, I believe that the city had, um, I, um, I believe they missed the K, it, it does some plan. There are just some conceptual plans that I ran across somewhere in a folder, I'm not getting what I got here, so I think that it's there, so I think that's something worth talking about.
Any more comments?
Ms. Burke?
Ms. Burke? Um, on that list, um, we talked about it a little bit, about, I know a lot of people have issued this, this sewer debt, uh, we're gonna talk about possibly paying down some of the sewer debt with the SLOSH, except for lots. From what I understand, it could be allowed to, uh, hot in the other term.
So we've been looking at it with, um, our municipal, um, advisor, and we have had some conversations with legal, we are verifying it, and we think that there's some possibilities for needing to do that. We're looking at the combination of the SLOSH four funds and SLOSH five funds. Uh, I do not want, I, I prefer to undersell and over the dollar, uh, over deliver than oversell and under deliver. So I want to get those numbers down, um, and make sure that we can, um, do what I think we can do before I, um, drive it out, but that's what we're working on, okay?
Any more comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, um, consideration actual approval of Resolution Two, twenty nineteen dash eleven, authorizing marriage to execute contract between the City of Hampton and All South Contractors to refer bounce price replacement. John, I guess this is for the sewer treatment plant.
Yes, sir, it is. Um, it's a budgeted item that we had the bid opening for, um, come under, about year of now, from the four up, I need to assign it. Agreement Wilson, we'll get started on it, it's a, it's a really needed, pretty important guy that, that's the one we have now, is, is very old and not special.
Okay, thank you, sir. An admission to a friend of this group.
Mr. Mayor McElmotto, now we approve you signing the agreement for the piece of equipment out at the sewer plant.
Do I have a second? Okay, you got a second, Ms. Burke, any discussion?
I wanted to add some amount on to it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
We have approved the, um, the one that purchased, uh, that, uh, flat.
Where is it?
The question I asked was, um, see my county was asking, was, was, you mentioned you had the lowest quote, but I haven't seen the other three, uh, quotes from the, the family.
Mr. City Management?
Yes, I'm, I, I wanna, I should, I should, this is a, um, this is a purchase of five hundred and forty-nine thousand. It was, uh, I want to point out that this was properly posted, it was, uh, it is, it was a budgeted amount. It came in under the budgeted amount. We made sure that it was, um, we followed all these state procurement laws. It was competitively bid, and what we're writing in is that we go with the low bidder.
Which is All South Contractors?
Right, All South, so it was competitively bid, we went through a sealed bid process, and, um, they have been, um, they've been certified, you know, the, um, bid met all the requirements, they took no exceptions. They're properly bonded, they're properly insured, and then we all qualified them, so they went through a, through a proper bidding.
Dollar amount's five thirty-nine?
Uh, no, five forty-nine, oh, we're I five, and we had budgeted, I think it's came in, I believe the shop said it's like thirty-seven thousand dollars under the, the expected price, um, so it was, it was, um, um, you know, low bid.
It's, I don't even know, it's, um, have we, have we used all, uh, have we ever used them before?
Have we ever used All South before? Um, I, I can't remember a project that we used All South for, but they are a very, um, reputable contractor.
I would, um, I made a point of this not going by professional services, we are going to competitively bid, period. This does not fall by professional services, okay? This is half a project, we are going to, we do not, um, post just a bunch of newspapers, we put them on the Georgia Department website, we follow all, we want to encourage competitive bidding on every single contract.
Okay, okay, more?
I was just gonna reach back and make a motion that we approve the contract for All South Contractors for five hundred and forty-nine thousand, sixty-five dollars.
No, I'm, okay, you have, any more discussion? All in favor? Pass the six clear. Consideration action on adoption of ordinance number four seventy-eight, first reading commending downtown parking regulations. An admission to a friend or disprove. First reading?
First reading.
Can I, can I ask who, who introduced that?
I think I received it.
I had, um, had Chief Austin do some research on this, we had some complaints somewhere downtown, the restaurateurs, we had some commercial, um, trucks that have been parked in, um, undesignated spots, including on streets blocking, um, blocking stop signs, also parking in undesignated spots, also parking on city-owned property and leaving it overnight. We also, um, we have a two-hour parking limit on Main Street that frankly, we're not enforcing. And then, you know, we've got some folks, um, that want to do shopping, and we're trying to encourage people to shop retail, and so we did an evaluation of that, like, if we want people to get out and walk and stroll and shop, you know, are we, are we counterproductive? So we wanted, I asked him to do an analysis and frankly, do, uh, a study of surrounding municipalities. I come from a more urban setting, and, um, so you have more population density, you don't want to have, we don't want to be too restrictive, for instance, people, we don't want to say no commercial trucks coming loading and unloading, we don't want to restrict that, but you also don't want to leave people leaving trucks overnight, and you don't want to have overnight parking, so this restricts overnight parking, but we don't want to, why have a sign up saying no two-hour parking if we're not enforcing? Plus, do we want our police officers spending their entire day walking, you know, either riding by and marking a tire with a chalk and seeing if the tire's moved or if it hasn't moved, and writing tickets and busy their park? I think they have better things to do, and I think that's not exactly enhancing public safety and the main thing is we want them to be able, we want people to come and enjoy downtown experience. By the same token, we wanted in the downtown area, we didn't want it to, um, we don't want commercial trucks just being left overnight. We've had a couple instances where commercial trucks being left, like literally blocking a stop sign and parked illegally on a commercial street, and that doesn't need to happen. So he did some research, he came back, we think this is a fair and reasonable, um, fair and reasonable, um, ordinance resolution, uh, and we operate through your consideration, you know?
Okay, any more questions?
Uh, this is Phil.
Ms. Burke?
Uh, if commercial trucks, they have a certain period to park, all the time they can park there, when they're loaded and unloaded at the store.
Correct, correct, they can, they, they can, as long as they're actively loading and unloaded. Now, the main thing he does is no overnight parking. We don't want, we don't want, like I said, we don't want our police officers involved trying to go and check, write somebody a ticket so they stay two hours and fifteen minutes. We don't have parking meters. I hope, I hope to God we, we become so busy that from downtown, and one day we consider having parking meters, but right now we're not there, you know? Uh, but, you know, we, we, we don't want to have that, but, um, we, we have limited parking space as it is. We want our restaurant people and our retail, we have limited parking, we don't need commercial trucks parking sideways and taking up four or five spaces that could have been used by, um, you know, vehicles, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I don't know, Peter, some people consider it downtown rest parking, which residents will be back here, so that's.
The, um, is this resolution only specified a specific street? Uh, Main Street, if, um, sorry to put it in, I might name the streets wrong because I'm, yeah, tired and my memories fade.
Go ahead, Ms. Burke, take over.
East Main Street, James Street, Cherry Street, and Barnett Street. From my latest understanding, the resident on Cherry Street and the law to be granted, uh, a waiver of a parking pass or whatever, because they're, they're not a commercial truck, so they're vehicles, you know, they're, they're not, you know, they're not big commercial trucks.
Let me be clear, this, this, um, ordinance reads that no vehicle, so not even.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Not a commercial vehicle, and then it goes on to say that the residential, um, persons of the downtown district are, are excluded.
They're excluded, the residents are excluded.
Ms. Burke, Ms. Burke, your name?
Alex.
Alex, that's probably the order.
The old, the old.
So the question is, how would we identify residents?
I would imagine if there is, um, a, uh.
We could, we could issue a parking, we, we, we would, we could issue a parking permit to residents.
Ms. Bodie?
Sorry to put it in, I believe, on the other counter. Um, it's a problem with commercial vehicles, isn't it? Are you illegal to like double park over lines or block a stop sign?
I guess there is illegal of parking there, I don't have the legal insurance for them, but this simplifies the parking issues from the compliance, and again, like Mr. Curry was saying, getting away from the two-hour parking to just the simple, no overnight parking from eleven to seven, so that all people tend to move. If a business owner, from my latest understanding, wants to park in front of their own business all day long, they can do so. They're gonna hurt themselves by blocking the customer's parking. From my latest understanding of it, it's simple about the parking, no overnight parking from eleven to seven.
Ms. Bodie, you have a zoning, uh, law that restricts commercial vehicles in particular districts, but that's in the zoning board, not in, I think this is like your, your downtown parking board, so different, different regulation.
I need to go back to a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
So with, um, with this saying any vehicle, how are we addressing people parking in the parking lot here?
That is not included, uh.
Oh, that's right, that's, it's only those streets.
It's like, just, just these streets is what's surrounding the downtown shopping district.
Okay, not listed. Yeah, just these streets.
It says city-owned or operated property. So let me just make a comparison, and while it's, on its face, I guess treats the government differently, it does. Your sign order in the zoning code, you don't have to follow that. And it says that the city does not, is not subject to the sign order. So if you wanted to advertise your July fourth celebration, you put a sign up, you don't go through the permit process. It doesn't necessarily have to be a ground sign or a state sign, it can be so many inches or height, because the government, and this is not the Hampton, uh, area. Uh, obviously, you could put something in there, some language, if you wanted to, that says government is exempt. Uh, but it's, it's kind of known, uh, at least that's the practice I have observed, uh, all around, uh, different, different jurisdictions.
In tagging on what you're saying, I know a lot of the vehicles that represent in the police department parking on the city hall, or enforcement, personal vehicles to where they're not able to take their markings home, uh, if they work night shift or excuse me.
That's a different story.
Right.
That's a different story. That's if their personal vehicles are there.
Right. And in the past, they've been granted permission to park a personal vehicle there while they go on duty. That would be another issue to address. So it was contemplated that the whole time it was envisioned and, you know, I talked myself into this. They would like for us to bring it back with a correction. I stand, I stand corrected on it, you know, we didn't, we didn't catch that. That's, that's the reason why we have help in the debate. That's why we bring it forward for consideration.
Go ahead, Ms. Bodie.
My confusion is if we're only changing it in the using hours, how does that help the businesses when they're operating?
It's more than that. It's, uh, it's, it's doing, it's doing two things. It's eliminating the two hour parking restriction that has for downtown. And it's stopping, it's stopping, uh, commercial parking where there, there were two things, okay? We had people, uh, commercial parking for community ownership period of time. We also had commercial parking on city property, uh, city owned property and parking on city streets illegally.
Any more discussion?
Is it a problem like now on Main Street parking? Uh, we connect, we've been a long time, been a long time parking in Main Street. Is it a issue?
Sorry, is it?
Isn't it issued as it right now? Parking issue downtown by, um, cars during the day, keeping them over slow.
No, 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 that's, that's.
There was, there was complaints about, about people not having anywhere to park because all business owners, of course, have taken up all this purpose space and you ride through there during the day and got to sit out with your boss all day.
I think the last question is that, um, you're proposing remove the two hours, leave a free for, sticker off basically.
No.
Only at night.
No, I thought he was saying that the two hours, the, the police officers just wouldn't pass. Two hours of monitoring that would be needed if you want the two hours.
Yeah, we're not, it, it's, it's difficult to monitor.
Because that, my understanding when I read here is that you remove two hours and no parking, not hours.
No, no parking from eleven to seven overnight.
Mm-hmm. So during the day they can park as long as they want.
Yeah.
No, they already have a two hour.
No, they've been removed.
Uh, we're, yes, you're concerned about that.
No, the two hours have been removed. They can park as long as they want.
So you're, you're talking about unintended consequences.
Right.
I'm, I'm sorry, Larry. So, okay, currently eighty-two dash seven, subsection B, says, you know, three change with our contract. It shall be unlawful for any person to park any vehicle on the following streets or portions of those streets for longer than two hours from eight thirty A.M. to five thirty P.M., Monday through Friday. So currently you cannot park longer than two hours, Monday, on the weekdays, Monday through Friday from eight thirty to five thirty. After five thirty, you can park there as long as you want, right? Or you can park overnight if you want. You just probably didn't park overnight Sunday night to Monday morning because you're getting past two hours, right?
Right.
So, and the streets that are affected are the parallel parking spaces along both sides of East Main. That's your current parking regulations with respect to two hours. Can, can we add, instead of removing that, can we just add that section? So still restrict parking for two hours from eight thirty to five thirty, Monday through Friday, only on East Main, right? Mm-hmm. And then go further to say you cannot park any vehicle over, any commercial vehicle overnight, I'm sorry, any vehicle overnight on the streets that are listed. Mm-hmm.
So the residents that live back on like Cherry Street, um, James Street, say they have it, a guest out of town. I mean, are they going to always have to come uptown and get a sticker or something if they're going to, like, if there's going to be a parking sticker? You know what I'm saying? Like, seems like it's going to complicate things for our residents.
I guess that would be the judgment on our police officers that are enforcing the law at that time. I mean, if they know within how to stay tagged. They did, they come by, that would exceed some more common sense thing, I think. Any more questions?
That's what, when we bring it back, we'll have some answers for you. But it's kind of, you have how many, how many?
I don't need a motion here to approve or disprove by somebody.
This is first.
This is first reading.
This is first reading.
Okay, yes. So I make a motion that we approve ordinance number four seventy-eight with the necessary correction to keep what we currently have in subsection eighty-two dash seventy and add what is being proposed tonight.
Do I have a second? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Pass four two. Consideration, action on adoption of order number four seventy-nine, first reading, amending the city zoning ordinance to update and repeal and replace certain sections of the current zoning ordinance existing in appendix A, B, and C regarding landscaping, planning, development districts, public space, orchards, and scoops, timbers, harvesting subdivisions, a partial sign, and the definition. Do I have a motion to approve or disprove?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number four seventy-nine.
Do I have a second? Mr. Turner, second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Read the three. Okay, I want, uh, I'm going to pass it on first reading, I vote for it. Executive session for the first, oh, wait, you got, oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry. Excuse me, excuse me, we got to, the millage rate. Just, Mr. Burr?
Yes, um, as, I don't know who all knows this, but for the past over twenty years, the city at one time had a millage rate tax that was in place a long time ago. Uh, about over twenty years ago, that was taken away by the council. And every year, uh, they rolled back that millage rate to zero. So that on your tax bill, you won't see a dollar amount, it'll be a zero there. So I was just asking if the council would vote tonight to either approve or disapprove of rolling that millage rate back.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion and second. And with the rolling the millage rate back.
To zero.
To zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to say, um, since the millage rate has been set and is rolled back each year, this is new to some of the council members. This is only my second time doing it. We have not done it in a cou- in a couple of years. Um, but I think it's important that we try to keep stable what in regards to our taxes, essentially with Henry County going up on taxes, uh, and see how we can stir, um, economic development to help with our tax digest and help the people here in the state of Kansas.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I look forward to it. If I, um, well, when I look at, um, enter county boards, you know, coming up still, um, any little talk or things, correct? Or not the spread, uh, the highest increase in Henry County. And, well, but if it's to say we have, we have to do something to, to, um.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All, all, they pass six, six zero. Okay, the council retreat, how's it, how's it?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we give Mr. Cole. He was an opportunity to, um, set some, some type of retreat with the entire council.
Okay. Do you have any date, Mr. City Managers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tucker. I, um, arrange for, so what I would be, um, help us on the recommendation and I participated in three of these. I think, um, in my past experience, I did a few discussions. And purpose in having the retreat, do you speak with your consensus? I would like for us to, um, all the four dates. The recommendation is that we do it all, we can change, right? So I know some of the other schedules that, uh, that make it difficult, but we're, um.
Can you speak up a little?
The four, the four dates, the four dates that we're offering are August seventh and fourteenth, and August twenty-first, uh, twenty-one, and twenty-eighth. Um, the recommendation is, and what I'd like to see is do is a week of lodge meetings, one day, contemplate what we discussed, come back a week later. The purpose in doing a retreat, we want to build consensus around our vision, what our brand needs to be, how we want to communicate both, um, both with each other and our community and how we want our community to communicate with us. What our needs, uh, our strategic plan for the next five years. And I want to be able to take the information that we give, gather collectively. And I want to be able to build our budget from that. But I need your input because my job is to implement your vision that you are like.
So, since, since we're jumping, we meet on August the, and then come back on the fourteenth?
That, that's, I think of any pairs, the seventh and the fourteenth, the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. Now, if that's too hard for us, we can do a Wednesday, we can do a Wednesday, Saturday, or we can, you know, we, we can change that. But I, Wednesday to Wednesday, um, and, um, and we're talking like an all day. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll pack a lunch, we'll bring one.
So I have a question. Where are we talking about doing this at? And you said all day, like from nine to five?
Uh, we can cut it just a little down. We can, we can, we can cut it, we can cut it just a little down. We can, we can, we can hang without. It, it will not be in the city of Kansas. We need, it won't be, it won't be in the city.
You know, do I, let's try to cut it down. Want to make the debt and we expect the, um, retreat. So, um, don't cut it down. You want, we want, we want all the councils to come out so that, that, um, a unity, a unit of one.
Well, what I'm going to, I'm going to tell you what, what, um, I came out of a, uh, what, what we did is like we established, we called it six pillars. And we built our budget around, it was around image, it was around communication, it was around quality of life. That was around public safety. It was about things that were important to the community. And, um, the, each commissioner, I expect that each council member, you feel from your seats and your constituents, right? You hear about whether it's, you know, the condition of parks, you know, the splash pass, whether it's Williams not being picked up or Rose not being paid or the needs for sidewalks. Or you want, you want patrol, you know, by, by the police department, or you want, or you got issues, God, you know, I, I, I already heard about code enforcement. You want this and this and that. Customer service, we heard complaints, okay? So these, this is where we gather these things, right? And so then instead of, we, this is your opportunity for you to share, okay? And then we start, then I start building structure around that because we no longer want to be reactionary. We want to be proactive and we want to build the most efficient government we can have. So contemplate those dates, um, and we can, they're good. Um, we'll give you a detailed itinerary. If, um, if they work for you, please let me know in the next couple of days. And I'll call the ball, we'll schedule it, we'll give you, uh, you know, detailed instructions.
Okay, we'll get back. Okay. Uh, there's one thing.
You had a motion on the floor, but I don't know if it's.
What is it? After that, I'm making, I was wrong.
We're wrong, okay. There's one thing that, uh, usually on the end that's not on there, positive comments. Do I need a motion to amend that to put positive comments? Proceed with the, okay, thank you, ma'am. Now, Mr. Burr, we'll start with you for positive comments. Okay, Mr. Turner.
Uh, it's one thing I've noticed last two months that we make a progress, a move in the legislature, had to be a change. So I'm glad to see that, and I hope to do.
Ms. Mitchell.
Wanted to, um, uh, ask that I be able to counsel if they need to go to the train, begin a training and to learn about the government, improve relationships, to fellow citizen, to the, to the officials and staff and also learn how to make city government more effective. And also to keep up with the current state and federal law and regulations as it contains to our cities. And also to help understand how to improve the quality of life in our cities and to network with other officials. And I want to give the, I want to say thankful to Ucious Amton to give me the opportunity to do all that.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Burr?
Um, so I want to, uh, publicly, um, I want to publicly, um, acknowledge our economic development department on the job well done for the event, uh, for the Fourth of July. Trying something different and turned out, hey! So we thank you.